Yes, so do you all rise for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have five, sorry, we have three counselors present and two counselor elects, present. Congratulations Melissa. Congratulations Jeff. Great to have you. So that's our roll call. And our first order of business is for our clerk to administer the oath of office for Melissa.
Rise please. You have to be. I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And will obey the laws.
And will obey the laws.
Of the United States and the state of Maine.
Of the United States and the state of Maine.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of town counselor.
Of town counselor.
Tax assessor.
Tax assessor.
And overseer of the poor.
And overseer of the poor. Congratulations.
Thank you Barbara. Your autograph. And you learn Barbara requires black pen.
Oh yeah.
Well, Barbara doesn't care.
Sometimes my career just looks better.
That's what we were told.
Barbara, congratulations Jeff and Melissa. Our next order of business is to elect a chair and vice chair for this coming year.
I would move to elect Mallory Cook as chair. I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Any other nominations? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed by zero. Thank you everyone. Happy to be chair again for the next year. And up next, vice chair, I will make a motion to nominate Jeff Minahan for vice chair for the ensuing year.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Any other nominations? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed by zero. Congratulations Jeff.
This messes up my system. I have two MCs.
I know.
We're MC squared. We already discussed this.
I am however, thrilled to have someone that is not a J. For when someone is on Zoom and I have to read everyone's names.
It was time to try to find another Jennifer to run or Jolene or something like that.
Many people calling now. That's, that's a lot. Alright, so we have chair and vice chair. Thank you everyone. And I, item number three, adopting meeting rules in addition to our administrative code. So hopefully you all had a chance, and I, for those of us who've been on the board before have reviewed the administrative code previously, but one thing I did want to just point out, and this is sort of carrying forward kind of a standard jackets at fourth for many, many years is that, you know, we as a council, I think all just need to agree that, you know, we might disagree on different things, but we should always treat each other with respect. And more importantly, you know, if we do have a point in time where we have a vote that's not a majority vote, where we've got different, you know, three, two kind of thing, that we kind of take that as this is the decision of the council and we move forward whether or not we love the decision that we landed on. And so I hope to just continue that go forward. I don't think we need a motion, but I just wanted to put that out there and I I expect that everyone will be on board and behave appropriately. So keeping honest with this one, do we need to make a motion to adopt the meeting, oh sorry, the what am I trying to say? Do I, do I need a motion here?
No.
Yeah, I didn't think so.
Is the Robert rule water in there or is that?
No, we use a modified, so we need to make an adopt with, madam chair, I moved that if we move away from the administrative code, we use a modified version of Robert's rules.
That's, that's a motion.
Thank you. A motion, a second question. So a modified version of Robert's rules, that just feels very nonspecific.
It is. It allows us the latitude to use what we want out of Robert's rules.
Okay.
If, if we adopt the whole thing, it locks us in.
So you can follow, you follow, which we do, we follow the general format. So we follow the format of motions, getting motions, second then, you know, second motion, wording on motions, and so forth and so on. But we don't, we don't get down into the very meat video.
Okay.
Point of war and.
Alright, thank you for refreshing my memory. Alright, any other thoughts or discussion from the council? We have a motion in a second on the table. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed by zero. And next order of business, sign the policy for treasurer's dispersment warrant for employee wages and benefits. We don't have any supporting docs for this, right?
This is, this is just a madam clerk, do you want to?
It's the annual document that you sign, so either the chair or vice chair can sign payroll.
Got it. Thank you. So then I think a motion would be in order for this one.
Madam Chair, will we sign the policy for treasurer's dispersment warrants for employee wages and benefits? Second.
We have a motion in a second. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed by zero. Awesome. Alright, moving on to approval of the minutes from October 25th. Any, before we have a motion, any changes or edits to these from anybody? Yep. Alright. So I'll make a motion to sign the minutes from our public hearing on October 25th, 2022 as written.
Second.
The motion in a second. Point of order, Melissa should not vote on these because she was not present or a counselor at the time, right? Alright, all those in favor of signing the minutes from the public hearing on October 25th, say aye.
Aye.
Just for, for the record, that's a vote of four to zero with one extension. Alright, and then same thing for our council minutes on October 25th. Any edits to this one from anybody?
And chair, we signed the, signed the town council meeting minutes of October 25th, 2022 as written. Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And just for the record, that vote was four zero with one extension from Melissa. Thanks everyone. And next we have the treasurer's warrant. I'll go ahead and make a motion. A motion to sign the treasurer's warrant dated October, so goodness, dated November 10, 2022, in the amount of one million fifty-three thousand one hundred and two dollars and sixty cents.
Second.
We have a motion in a second for discussion. I just want to point out this is a large one because it does include our payment for SAD 35. Any other discussion? Alright, all those in favor said treasurer's warrant, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed by zero. No presentations tonight? Cool. Public comment. Anyone in the room have anything they want to bring up that is not on our agenda? If you could just stand and state your name and your address.
Dave Bradley, Emery's Bridge Road. Am I allowed to comment on new business?
When we get there, I'll ask for public.
John Costello, 123 Boyd's Corner. I'm not sure if this is, we all know there was an active shooter today in Sanford. I guess the question is, is there any update on any of the stuff that was mentioned in a meet, in a meeting a while back for our own like active shooting with the police department? Is there any news on any training that they're going to receive or anything like that?
Yep, their school and the police department are going through, they have a national program database that they're following. They're going through that and they're currently, they do have a plan, but it just needs to be updated and modified. And they're working on that with hopefully a tabletop drill later this fall and then probably late next spring or next, next fall, 23, an actual drill. They have, they have been working on it. They do have, they do have it in place. They're just trying to get the chief is, you'll see in my report tonight, the chief has taken an updated active training class and some of the officers are going to.
I know it was a hoax. It just, it just made me think today of where we're at as far as if something like this.
Well, it was the same thing I was talking about. I was wanting to get the nine o'clock in the office, that's what we were talking about. And one of the things that we talked about was, you know, earlier today, one of the things that they at least found out out of Sanford, Sanford planned work. You know, they had helicopters and, you know, 63 law enforcement agencies and all these, you know, so they're planning work and, you know, we're working on upland and hopefully get it.
Yeah. Anyone else from public? Anyone on Zoom? Okay. Alright, we'll move on to unfinished business. So item number one is zoning ordinance for medical cannabis caregiver licensing. So just an update on kind of where things stand with this. So we've kind of had kind of some, some back and forth over the past several months between the planning board and our planning department and code enforcement department making some edits and stuff to this. And I think maybe three or four meetings ago, we got this draft from Tammy and Jenny, our code enforcement officer and town planner. And we kind of threw a lot of edits and stuff to them and this is the kind of return from them to us of that document. So this is just for, for us to have and review and stuff because we have a workshop scheduled for two weeks from today, October 29th, with the planning board. Tammy and Jenny will be present there as well, correct? I'm looking at you guys.
Yes, and they're on, they're on Zoom tonight. If you have questions for them, if anybody had anything that was, you know, that they didn't understand or needed clarification on, I asked them to
Great.
Zoom, so they're zooming if you need them.
Okay. Tammy and Jenny, thanks for joining us. So I think my sort of suggestion is if we have any, like, anything super, super pressing that we want, you know, some input from Tammy and Jenny and the planning board, like between and now, in two weeks from now, like if there's anything that anybody has from this draft, I think we should share that with them now, but if it's kind of stuff like more discussion, I think let's just save that for our workshop since that's dedicated time to dig through that stuff.
Yeah, go ahead. I have comments just about the form. Should that wait until the workshop?
Yep.
Yeah, I think so. Anything else?
One thing, madam chair, November 29th.
Yeah.
Not October.
I'm sorry.
You're still stuck. You're still stuck in October. I just want to make sure for the record of November.
Thank you. November 29th, 6:30 PM. Thank you for correcting me.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Madam Chair, I just have a couple of things.
Yeah.
On page five, section C, it mentions the security alarm system. I think that the alarm system should maybe be better defined. Because for some people, an alarm system might just be a dog. For another person, it could be a full, you know, professionally monitored with cameras and stuff. So I just think that the more, the better for this. And then my other question for Tammy is probably going to be able to answer this and it'll probably drive her crazy. Recently, state regulators have declared tobacco licenses and a storefront are required to sell products to patients from, as caregivers. And I'm wondering how that's going to affect the ordinance that we are creating, if that's something else we're going to have to add into that. So the state is now, so the Office of Cannabis Policy has declared that tobacco licenses and a storefront are required to sell products to patients because of the rolling papers and certain pipes that are used are also used for tobacco use. So now the state is wanting these caregivers to carry a tobacco license.
Okay.
So is that going to?
I love to stay in Maine.
Yeah, and I know that they had mentioned that this is taking so long because everything just keeps changing. So I didn't know if, in what I had been reading, some people are saying it's legitimate. Some people are saying it's not going to pertain to certain caregivers. So I don't know if that's something that we need to look into before this draft is finalized.
That's news to me. Tammy, I think you came up and you do.
Correct, I did. It's a good question, but what I'm going to do is instead of saying yes or no, I would like to research it and find out exactly how the state is going to take and be wording this so that we can make sure that we have it in the right arena for the cannabis retail sales and also to make sure that if it needs to apply to anything else, we can have it at that point.
Perfect. That's perfect, Tammy. Thank you. Is that something you think you might be able to look into before our workshop on November 29th?
I am certainly going to work towards that, yes. So you can take and review it ahead of time.
Awesome. Thanks, Tammy. Did you have anything else?
Yep.
Cool. Anything else on cannabis topic? Alright, moving on to number two, joint ordinance team. I need some help on this one.
Well, Tammy had asked for two councils to be on and two planning board members to help her with the LD 2003. That draft ordinance, putting that into land use ordinance. So we wanted to wait till a new board was set to see if there was interest for two councils to participate in that.
So this would be two counselors participating in the LD 2003 review implementation. How do we go with it?
Yeah, Tammy, you want to jump in and kind of the draft that you were looking for?
What the planning board would like to do is to help have the town counselors also onboard with doing some of the, the preliminary work for the ordinances so we don't sit and do go through first the planning board, then the town council, and as they see things come up, it would help to alleviate the time constraints that a lot of times we run into.
That's a great idea. Any, anyone interested?
I'll be diving into it whether I'm part of it or not.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else? Any other? Alright, I will, I can name myself then, I guess. Unless any other takers?
Dominate your people there.
For, for this, do we need a motion?
No, I think you can, you can just, you can just, it's just you and him.
Okay. So we'll just, we'll just say that Mallory Hook and Jeff Minahan will be the council representatives for the joint ordinance work.
Cool. Thank you very much. I'll be happy to report that tomorrow evening.
I think that will be, I think that's a great suggestion, especially because I think that that's going to probably be a lot of work and to your point of the back and forth that we often have with council and planning board, just hopefully we'll move things on along a little bit. Alright, and any other, anything else on that one? And number three, update on traffic study. So last we met, we had sort of talked about, do we need to revise or update, I guess, our scope for tobacco technics for traffic study? And it sounds like they got back to us. Any, anything else you want to?
No, you saw my report. Basically, on all the cut through streets, what's the main lieutenant's point was, it's not worth doing any kind of study on all side streets right now, the four neighborhoods. Because you don't know what you're going to pick for solutions and how those solutions would have an effect on, on traffic. So his recommendation is do the report and then see what you pick for solutions, that you would implement that solution. Then you would study what the neighborhoods look like then. And we know what the problem is now. We already realized through cut through and so forth. And then we would do a study based on does, how the implementations of the resolve affects the neighborhoods. That was the first item. On Norton Street, Main Street, that intersection is going to be added for the scope of the study. That was going to cost additional 6,000 and I authorized that. And I authorized it back when we met, when we talked to them, so that it wouldn't hold up to the report. We realized park utilization needs to be addressed. Right now, we're doing parking in the study along Main Street where we're talking about. Will be looked at as part of the overall scope. Myself and Jenna kind of following along to see, getting some ad hoc information. That's all we're doing right now. Denise is going to go all business, visit the businesses in the block in the next couple of weeks and talk to them about parking and how that issue addresses them. There was an issue with the fire department on Norton Street. So during the day, at four, five o'clock in the afternoon, when the traffic is backed up on Main Street, gets backed up on Norton Street, when the fire department comes out to go to call, they can't, even if they could go by the cars, they can't get to the intersection to get out onto Main Street anywhere. So in talking to Brad, he said that would make absolute sense so that if the council was to decide to put street lights in, let's say hypothetically, then they could put GPS control devices in the fire trucks that would turn the lights green to clear the traffic off of Main Street so people on Norton Street could exit out so the fire truck can get out to go through. So that's, he's going to reach out to the chief and have that discussion. They'd like to have the traffic study completed by mid-January, present the final report to the council late January. Have you said a public hearing, gave you paperwork? Did I miss anything you can do?
No, I don't think so. And basically the hope is, is whatever we pick for a solution to keep the traffic flowing, that people will stay away from the neighborhoods knowing that they're going to have their turn next year. So hopefully it will resolve itself on those side streets.
And that's what I have for traffic.
And any questions, comments from the council? And from the public?
Yeah. 34 Liberty Street. I'm all fine for this. I think saving money, like if it's six grand to just add one area, it's going to be a lot just to add. So I think the only question I have is regarding the side streets is, how can we measure their changes after we implement, you know, if we put in a light and then we look for things afterwards, we have to have what happened beforehand. So I don't know if the people at Sabado Technics can say, well, can we look at like M dot traffic counts or something like that? I will go back to them and ask, can we have a picture of what it looks like now so that we can compare it to after? Because I think we then implemented change and then afterwards they'd say, well, there's more traffic on our street. I was like, well, how do you know unless you took a measure beforehand? Does that make sense?
You know, like I say, we can, we can add, we could do the whole town. We don't have enough money to budget to do all that.
Yeah.
You know, that's the problem. The problem, the problem is time and money.
Yeah.
You know, and so, you know, they, what, what they seen, and I'm not saying we can't, we can certainly call and ask that question. They're going to say the same thing. We can do, as well they are told, we can do whatever you want. He's going to have to bill you. So I, you know, we looked at what you guys have talked about. We looked at what they had said about the neighborhoods. We know the neighborhoods are a cut through Paul's problem right now. And we're hoping that we would see less traffic if we put solutions in to allow traffic to flow smoother on Main Street. So don't talk to me, talk to them, talk to them. They want to spend the money to because, so here's the thing, you live on Liberty Street, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So somebody else who lives on Smith Street is going to say, well, I want Smith Street done.
Yeah.
I want Liberty Street done. Or I want Young Street done.
Academy.
I want Academy Street done. And then where are we going to draw that line? We've got to figure something out somewhere so we can at least get a base report. And I'm not saying that the side streets aren't important, but if we attempt to fix the big problems first, and then we still continuously have no problem, and Brad did say that, then you can come back and do a secondary report to your neighborhoods specifically to still have your track problem, identify what those are.
So we can pick the times right now. If you drive through this town, I can tell you the streets are busy and what times.
Absolutely.
Norton Street is an absolute nightmare from three o'clock on. Saturdays and Sundays, absolute nightmare. We know that. Liberty Street, shipyard traffic, soon as 2:30, 6:00 gets backed up, everybody bangs down that way to get on left to go. We know that. Liberty Street, shipyard traffic, soon as two thirty-six gets backed up, everybody bangs down that way to get on left to go to Orangeburg and Dole. I'd rather not, I'd rather let them give us their report, see what we wanna do. And then we could go to the study then. After we see what we wanna do for an option, then we could do a study to see what it's gonna do on those streets. We could do it beforehand, but I think we need to get that study to see what they're gonna offer us for suggestions. I think that step, before we do anything, we need to know what they're offering. Cause we might not be able to do it. Right? We might not be able to do what they offer us. We might not have the money.
That makes sense.
I just, I don't wanna.
I'm not saying we should do it now, I'm saying, yeah, I agree with you.
Before we implement it, when we choose it, we should be able to picture how it's gonna affect those side streets without implementing it worse than it is now. Before we make the decision.
Yeah, and there's already information out there, like M dot releases volume, they measure it every so often.
Somebody's doing every bridge road because the lines were on every bridge road last week. So I don't know who it is, because I know it's not Sabego Technics, but somebody's doing every bridge road.
It's me.
Okay.
So you can look it up and then you can see, I mean, so it's using the information that's out there is important, like so that we don't reinvent the wheel or whatever, so. But I just wanna make sure that, you know, we have a prior, so that after we make a change, whatever we decide on, we can see if there's a, you know, an effect on the side streets, whether it's positive or negative.
Agreed.
Then my other question was, just for the study, are we measuring turning counts in every direction at each intersection?
I have no idea how they do this, I don't.
Can I contact them to find out?
It's the town stuff. Every time, if you call them, that raises the price of, for every citizen calling, that raises the price.
Okay.
Two hundred dollars an hour, it's expensive.
Yeah.
So they don't have a minimum of thirty seconds. If you have a question, I can ask that question and get back.
Do we have like a contract that lays out what they would do that we can look at?
We had a scope of work.
Yeah.
And they would just go about traffic flow problems at Main Street, Golden Street intersection, how it affects Main Street flow, Main Street to Academy Street, Main Street to thirty-six intersection.
Yeah.
That's it, and now Norton Street.
I guess my, my question is for the two thirty-six four intersection, I would wanna know the traffic cut, or the turning counts in every direction.
Well, they added the school, I don't, again, I don't know how they do it, the traffic engineers, we hired them before.
I think what I'll say is that, like, this is what they do, this is their entire function, it's exactly what we're asking them to do. So I feel confident that there, this is gonna be comprehensive. And you wanna take a look at our, whenever it was from ten years ago, so because kind of how we got to Sabego Technics, like, I don't know if you remember, but we, they had completed a study for us tenish years ago, and we asked them to update it. So if you wanted to take a look at, and it's available online.
Yeah. It just didn't outline that, that's why I was asking. They may have the data, they just may not.
I don't know that they use that, I don't know what they use the data and how they, you know, I know they use, I'm not a traffic engineer, so I don't want to say.
I just didn't know the, the contract that we signed with them is publicly available, that we could read that.
Yeah, it is, you can, it's. But it doesn't, it didn't specify that, especially a larger scale, scope of work, you did not get into the engineering techniques of it.
Okay.
Any other comments on traffic study? Do you need anything else from us, Tammy, or you just needed to update us on where things stand? Do you need any motion from us? New business, number one, training policy for council, planning board, and zoning board of appeals members. So just to provide a little bit of context here, I think with Tim joining us, we kind of realized that our administrative policy was lacking in the training department, is that fair to say? And so Tim has gone through and suggested some updates to that, to ensure that all of our board members are up to speed on kind of how things should work. Any other context there to Tim?
Oh, I presented you the policy, one for the town council, and then one for the planning board, zoning board. Kind of different. There's nothing, there's nothing here that's not readily available for them to get. The MMA Association, their program they do is both in person and online, or by Zoom rather. And in January, that's actually going online, and the same with the planning board, the zoning board of appeals. I guess, we know one of the things is that for liability reasons, that councilors, planning board members, and zoning board of appeals have to have some kind of training. So this is the very basics that I've used in other communities, and I think it's worth passing here.
Agreed. Anyone have any questions or anything?
Adam Chair, I moved to accept the new administrative policy that supplies training for town council, the planning board, and zoning board of appeals members. Second.
So that's efficient?
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Alright, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed by zero, thank you for doing that, Tim.
Well, thank you.
Alright, number two, schedule workshop for TIF districts.
Anymore?
Okay.
She's gonna do a presentation for you guys next Tuesday.
Okay.
Unless you feel like it's necessary.
Okay. We can maybe revisit next week if we need to?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we, we talked about that one today, I agree with that. I think it can give you the information, we need to talk to the lawyers
Okay.
on what actually needs to be presented to get it to, so the clerk can get a what are you doing, send it to the newspaper?
Post the notice.
Post the notice. And the only thing with the Jeff, the lawyer said is, because of the way the Jeff law is written, even though nobody reads the newspaper, we still have to post it. And that can't be done until you improve the application, so it's kind of a funky process that we're gonna follow, but we think we can get everything done for you on the twenty-second. Next week, Denise is gonna do a presentation for the new test and updating the other test. And at that time, we're waiting to have a finalist from the attorney tomorrow, we should get it. That says that that's okay, to go ahead and approve, you'd approve the public hearing in late December. And then that'll be tentative. And then once you approve the application in early December, then the clerk can go ahead and post the, still have the ten days to have a public hearing. But we just wanna get that up, because I think we can do it all without adding another meeting to your list, in my list.
And we're trying to keep the flow going because this greatly affects our budget, which we'll be starting to work on, you know, already next week.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think if we can not put another workshop on our ordinance, I wouldn't be sad about that, so we can just revisit this next week. Second of everybody? Cool. And so no action taken on new business number two. New business number three, code chapter one thirty, vehicle and traffic ordinance review. Tim, I'm gonna ask you to keep it up for us.
Well, so after the parking issue that you had, that you voted on earlier, and talking to police chief, talking to public works director, talking to previous town manager, talking with the town clerk. The parking ordinance is a mess. It's, it's not being followed, it's being regulated at different levels, different times, different places. And I really think the best option here is to pull this back in for a minute. And I would like to have us take a stab at it and present something back to you that says, here. Take a look at this, and this is why we're, we're, we're at. There were, I can confirm now, there are, there are currently word this correctly, there are currently in invalid agreements that were made, that are actually in place today. So that I do not wanna relive another, what we just went through. Best way to address it, my feeling is, if you let us take a stab at this and then, you know, get your feedback as we craft this and see if it needs, I think it's been an issue for a long time. One way or the other, try to fix it.
So to summarize, Tim wants to take a stab at our parking ordinance and suggest some changes and bring them back.
Yeah, draft a, draft a sample ordinance with some explanation as to why. And let you see, see what you think of it, and then get your input back and see where you wanna go with it. You know, the main issue is one of two things, right? We either enforce our ordinances equally and fairly across the board entirety, or we don't. But you can't pick and choose that, you shouldn't do that. Because someday, somebody's gonna stand in front of me and say, well, how can we do it for them and not me? And then, or I have, I have an agreement with previous town manager. And when I call him and they say, well, I think I did that.
But again, no legal basis to do it, so.
None whatsoever.
Just wanna make sure that's public, that town manager has no legal basis, no legal standing.
We cannot, I have no authority, I have no authority, John, on any given day of the week, month, year, based on the sunshine or the moonlight to alter ordinances in the town.
Nor am I concerned that you would.
I would not. But somebody else did.
Correct.
And I, I'm just trying to fix this the best I can.
I think you're doing a great job in the direction you're going.
So I just need a motion from the council to tell, tell me to go ahead and start to work on this project.
Was this the topic that you had to comment on?
No, I wanna talk about boilers.
Okay, alright. Any, any other thoughts in the council, or anyone from the public?
I just, I think it's a good place to start, especially with the traffic study and having Denise involved, we have all the staff here. We've got a good, good team to be able, at least like you said, give a good whack at it.
Alright. Yeah, go ahead.
That would be no overnight parking, correct?
I don't know. I, I'm not there yet. I wanna pull the, I wanna pull the ordinance, once the council approves it, gives me permission, the staff, we would pull it, and then we would do, you know, we'll put together some draft, do a workshop with the council, get their thoughts. I don't know. There, so here's the thing, there are some instances where there's no overnight packing that's enforced, some places where it's not enforced. And, and so there was a standing rule here for many years, we didn't enforce overnight parking. So why have all this stuff? So that works so good, except for you. If you park in that one parking lot that we've decided to enforce, and I keep ticketing you, and all of a sudden you got five hundred dollars in tickets, you're gonna show up at my office and say, well, Tim, why are you doing this here? When I can park in this parking lot overnight, you know it's seasonal, and I get a ticket. That's the problem. So I'm just trying to bring equity to the ordinances, so that it's fair and usable across the board. That's all.
And from a process standpoint, you know, Tim will, Tim and the staff will sort of propose some changes to the council, we'll have a workshop, we'll discuss, there'll be public hearings, like this will be a whole process associated with it, that will happen over several, several weeks. Alright. So we need a motion?
Yeah, something like that.
I'll make a motion to allow the staff to update the ordinance and make language improvements to bring to the council.
Okay. I can hear a motion in a second, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed by zero. Thanks for that, Tim. And then lastly, we have new business, number four, town, Paul Boiler update. Would you like to speak now, or do you wanna wait until we?
No, I don't wanna.
Yeah, yeah.
P. Bradley, four hundred, Emery's Bridge Road. This is just some information I wanted to share, no, not money. The money's good though. So I have a couple of questions and observations about boilers. So Maine is one of ten states in the US that require boiler and pressure vessel techs to be licensed and certified. Only licensed certified boiler techs are allowed to install, operate, evaluate, perform preventive maintenance, and decommission boilers and pressure vessels. Also, boilers in schools and municipal buildings are required by the state to have yearly internal and external boiler inspections. Okay, so which brings me to my first question. After looking at the pictures of the boilers, I don't see how they've been passing yearly inspections. I don't believe that the current condition of the boilers happened over a one-year period. With that being said, I realize that the town tries to use local resources whenever possible. I was wondering if more quotes were going to be required, and if a new boiler installation was going to be put out for bid. I believe there are two other heating contractors in town that have boiler licenses. And something else to consider, I worked in maintenance at Pratt and Whitney for forty years. And I never worked on a boiler, because it wasn't licensed. But did work with the boiler operators, assisting them with equipment and materials. As Pratt and Whitney has a very robust predictive and preventive maintenance program. About six years ago, the boilers were switched from oil to gas. Gas is far more efficient and boiler friendly. Also, it may cost a little more. The newer boilers have non-intrusive monitoring software capabilities, where a licensed tech can check on the operation of a boiler from his laptop remotely. That would probably save, you know, a lot of visits to checking the boiler. It's all I had.
Thank you, thank you.
You going to answer those for you?
Sure.
Okay, go back to your first question, I was, I don't remember, but.
On the first question was please. After looking at the pictures of the boilers, I don't see how they've been passing yearly inspections.
I don't know, so when, about three months ago, I went over, you wanted the meeting, but I went, maybe two months ago, I went to P. Gagnon and Sons, because they've been our service agents, for as long as I can research back. And went and talked to them, and they said that they were told by the downtown manager in two thousand and sixteen not to come back unless they were called. So.
That explains a lot.
And they said, and we, so they, they, the boilers had not been serviced since two thousand and sixteen. The burners had not been serviced since two thousand and sixteen. The only time we would call them, under the orders of previous administration, was if they needed servicing. And so my assumption now, now that I understand and know, and I've been down there, the service tech came and got me and said, hey, I shut the boils off, soon as I shut them off, they cooled down, the water started leaking through one of them, boil number two started leaking. Number one's weeping, not leaking, just weeping. So I got really concerned, and I called Dan, who's the maintenance woman at P. Gagnon, and talked to him. They're working me up a quote, that's the first thing I wanna do, I need to get a quote from them first, then I'll get other prices. I'll have a couple of the companies come in and do an evaluation. And he said, right now, the boilers are fine, we turned them back on, they heated up, they held. They don't appear to be leaking when they're running because they're warm. As you know, the metal expands when it's warm, he said, so here's the, here's what we're gonna do, don't shut them off till spring. And then once we shut them off, I know, that's a crappy thing, but that's what I've been left with, sorry, that's all I got for it. I'd like to tell you.
Yeah, it was pretty sad, I mean.
So, so the answer to your first question, though, the answer to your second question about getting other, I gotta even see what this looks like. They did, he did mention to me, he said, this might be a perfect opportunity to look at an alternative heating source, propane and so forth. But I will get, you know, other, I'll get somebody else to look at another evaluation. Because I, I assume it'll fall within that cost factor of that. So, and that's, basically, that's the update that I can tell you. I don't, you know, this didn't happen overnight. But when I went back to P. Gagnon in September, I said, I want, come do the service. And he said, they, he came to do the inspection and to clean, he said, I can't clean your boils because if I feel I'm gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna, he said, if I even touch the side of the number two boil, it's gonna fall apart. And he showed it to me, and he just barely touched it, and the plate fell out, and said, I'm not doing anything. And so I said, okay. And he said, you know, he took the pictures, sent me the pictures, and he said, you know, I, this is just not, you know, that doesn't happen, you're right, overnight. So it's what it is, I, I, you know, I thought about the plan now, but we, it's moving forward, trying to figure out what the best solution will be. We try to avoid these things, we try to do preventative maintenance on all our equipment, dump trucks, fire trucks, waste guy, buildings, and try not to get there. But whatever happened, happened. And I'm just gonna try and fix it as best feasibly, cost effectively as I can. Easily, cost-effective, and like, it'll be a decision of something. Nope, I asked him that, and he said, no. He said, we're fine. He said, run them, run them, he said, because next time you shut them on, it probably will crack enough.
And wherever we land with the repair, we'll include, uh, regular maintenance and maintenance.
Well, we should, we should do everything we do, right? And that, and that's, that's the problem, is we, you know, routine regular maintenance, whether it's buildings, whether it's vehicles, whether it's anything else, you know, when you don't do it, and especially when the tax paid is paying for it, it costs you down the road. That's really the only update I have. I'm, I'm waiting to get the report. When I get the report, I'll evaluate that. Then I'll reach out to a couple of other companies. Who are the other companies in town?
Um, you know, I know one's Integrity, um, Jeff Lee, I think his name is. Um, he's up on the mountain road. I can't remember the other one. He's, what was it by? By, of course. Yeah. When I put in boiler technicians, I, I Googled boiler technician South Grove, man, they come up with three. I was just curious, you know, because there's a lot of options up there for boilers and heating in general.
Right. So the problem we have, like they said, you know, it's a nineteen, what, twenty? Nineteen twenty-six school building, so there's probably not a lot of boiler pirates sitting on the shelf.
With that being said, um, North Grove has an old school building that they use for a town hall. And I was just wondering if maybe you could talk to them, see if they have similar situation, what they, they've done to. Exactly, yeah, I noticed, new windows.
Right. So new windows, new air handling systems, new boilers, new heating systems. That would be a major renovation, that building. You're talking a couple million bucks. You know, that's what we're looking at right now. We're doing, we're, I got an RFP that I'm building on order of the council to put out, to get a proposal to look at whether this building worth repurposing and renovating for a town office, or do we look at trying to build one, or it'd be cheaper to build one on another site somewhere else, more efficient, more modernized. Because when you do this, as you know, and this is exactly the prime example, the minute you start to renovate a building, you're gonna bring it all up to code. That's the problem. So, and in nineteen, just give you a little history. So when talking to P. Gagnon, in nineteen ninety-six, they replaced the burners. They had had the package, replaced the burners, the boilers, and the heating system in its entirety. What do you think they did in nineteen ninety-six? They said, let's save the money and not replace the boilers, and let's not replace the heating system, let's just replace the burners. They replaced the burners in nineteen ninety-six. It's all good. So, regardless, why, whatever happened, that's more we're watching.
Yeah. Is that a low-pressure boiler or a high-pressure?
Low-pressure, low-pressure. Yep.
Alright, so, next meeting or whenever we get the information.
Soon as they get something viable, I'll get you back some more information.
Sounds good. And no action from us tonight, honestly. Cool. Yo, um, Tom, I like doing this at the end, by the way.
Well, highway fall cleanups underway. Um, they're obviously getting the equipment ready for winter. And as you folks know, line striping has been completed on Belmont, which stands with Brattle Street.
Thank you so much. I've had two people actually stop and thank me.
Perfect. That was your idea.
No, no, I, I pass it on to you.
Uh, police five in the last two weeks has had ten arrests, eight accidents, one hundred traffic stops, of which twenty-five were on Fulton Street. Um, one police guy was out of commission waiting on parts, uh, mechanical problem. Honorable mention to Officer Osno and Officer Aguilara. Agulera. They came upon a, uh, I guess it was a woman.
Yes, the older woman.
An older woman who had had a flat tire, was waiting for someone to come change it, and they stopped to change it. So she wrote a nice thank you for them, and achieved from a thank you letter, and put it, commendation thing, put it in her file. I wanna, that's the kind of public relations we like to hear. Uh, the COVID clinic went well at the, uh, community center, sixty-six inoculations. Officer Malatak, who was on probation, a fairly new officer, has decided to leave the force. He's decided to uh, follow the, uh, current as a paramedic, go get his paramedic school. And they have two possible new candidates working on background checks now. For training, Chipper went to two classes last week involving PTSD in the workplace and responding to school shooting. Um, and ju- just so you know, every one of our offices is required to take a certification in school shooting. So when they come onboard, if they haven't had it through the academy, then they have to go get it. You know, that would be a rare case, like, they, they should have it from somewhere. It's a state-of-made law. They got all offices in the state, they ain't gonna be trained in school shooting. Right about in the last two weeks, had sixteen calls. Yesterday, there's three hundred and sixty-two calls. Uh, they're working on updating their policies proceeding in April, uh, training on, they're, they're training on new and solid used equipment this past month, while they're trying to pass annual inspections. Code enforcement in the last two weeks had two building permits, nineteen building inspections, two plumbing permits, new addressing for Old Mill Road, Great Mill Road, and Waterside Lane. And she's working with D E P for possible new trail on Liberty and Blind Street, that trail we talked about. Planning Great Hill Road, five lots of divisions, going to finally review after a high-intensity soil surveys completed. Bittersweet Lane, stormwater concerns being addressed this week with Christie Re, or Vaska. She'll be here, she's a stormwater lady, she'll be here on November night to ensure the stormwater ponds and drains are up to standards prior to the, November night, right? December night, December night. To ensure the stormwater pond drainage are up to standards. Um, Kami's been reviewing the ordinances to ensure the following. Our remaining on track is option of council, land use ordinance for compliance with erosion and sediment ordinance and low-impact line ordinance along with guidance that has been received from S M P C for the L V two thousand and three, which is going to affect the land use ordinance. The library, October reading program was a huge hit. Sixty people signed up. Thirty participated, forty-five thousand pages were read. The grade's school student won, and the top five winners received gift certificates for all the shops in town. Revision, which is, oh, you go ahead and talk about that.
Okay, uh, we and I met with Revision, who is the solar company that put the solar panels on the library eight years ago. We were concerned with the generation and wanted to see if they were generating to the capacity that they were expected to. And they showed us how to use, you know, read the, um, displays and they're giving us a quote on how to have an either app or a computer so that we can look at it that way as well. Um, but in looking at what, uh, they're producing, they are old technology now. So they are producing to what they expected to at that time, which is greatly different from what a new solar panel would be able to produce today. So they're at least doing what we expected them to do.
We were gonna put in together Technology Tuesday class for teens and adults, working with computers and computer programs, uh, beyond basic computer knowledge. And they had twenty-seven hundred people visit the library in total, so eight of them. Recreation, starting, started halftime for adult Zumba class online. It'll sign in two weeks and have received no longer response, however, out of the kindness of my heart. And I know how you folks are all supporting of physical, you know, physical motion and being active. I resume, resume five, reserve five spots for you guys.
Oh, it's on Tuesdays. Was that intentional? So we can't go?
Uh, we'll get you there somehow. Uh, little maintenance program starting November twenty-second through December thirteenth on Tuesdays. Uh, breakfast with Sanders now set up as, as a pre-register pay event. It was in a past year, people would register and not show up and not pay. And they're already seeing a lot of signs. Uh, gearing up for winter ski trips, which includes planning and looking for the best rates possible for different places. The seniors, the next trip to the seniors is a shared tribute, and the bus is already full. I don't know what that is. Denise introduced Nikki, promoted to a lady, Jean Saunders, to discuss making supper an age-friendly community. It's about creating a volunteer network, usually retired professionals. Help seniors in town. An example would be a retired firefighter, check smoke detectors, or a handyman who can change light bulbs and install safety handrails. Um, and all potty found to be very encouraging, seem to be a good, good, good fit. Assessing property, uh, tax stabilization program deadline is December first. We received over three hundred applications. Uh, approval orders will be filed via mail merge due to the number of applications received. Rules will be noted under the exemptions in the system, computer system. All sales have been entered into the system, analyzing them to send a report to turn, turnaround document to the state so we can get our certified ratio, which determines updates that need to be done next year. Uh, the company is doing the tax map and the regions are done. Now looking into being able to print our own maps. Should know in the next one, two weeks, possibility to that. We have a big G I S printer in the office that we captured out of the downstairs office and see if we can get that working. G I S data, Trio, data reconfiguration ready by the end of the month. You wanna elaborate on that?
She just has to enter the information into Trio, um, and that's gonna tie into the G I S mapping. I don't know all the specifics about, um, how it integrates in her assessing, um, part of Trio, but it'll all be tied together.
The Trio is our software, which is an absolute nightmare. It's the most unfriendly thing, correct?
Yeah, didn't we move to, isn't Trio so newish for us?
It was installed in seventeen, two thousand seventeen.
There's only, there's only two municipal systems in the state of Maine, Trio and one other. And neither one of them.
Oh, they're both bad?
Trio's bad news is worse. Town Clark, you wanna, Madam Clark, you wanna talk about voting day? Anything, uh, things went well, nobody was?
It went very well. It was outrageously busy, and we issued more absentee ballots than we ever have, and didn't receive a number of them back, which was very disappointing.
Oh, wow, yeah.
And, and we'll, I'll stop you ahead of run, about how many people voted, what percentage, you any idea?
About a sixty percent turnout.
Wow, very good. Transfer station, the newsletters that we made up at the town office are being handed out, and Dan says it's a big hit. Dawn sent one hundred, and they all went, so she'll continue to provide additional coffee. Uh, very busy last Sunday due to the nice weather. Everyone's out cleaning their garages. Uh, transfer station took in eight hundred dollars in four hours, which is only happens on a full day. New hire on our foundation, ten development planners, name is Jeff Maury, and he worked at the transfer station in acting, and he's working on great. And Dan says the citizens of all the new bags, you wanna, you can work with economic developer. Can I do that in finance, please?
Sure. Um, Denise's been working on the tips and reviewing the maps, intent it back to seveneen, planning for the final draft. Um, looking at this point of creating one tip district, which she'll do a presentation on next week. It'll be transit-oriented, uh, mostly down the two thirty-six corridor, and then we're gonna amend the downtown tip district um, to fund more projects, initiatives, and salaries. The business development and economic development is now setting up two, uh, more business inquiries for this week. She has signed up with me, Lamb, for three, I don't know, sorry, I'm sorry, center, um, so that we can access more grants. Uh, she's researching land and water conservation fund grant information to see if that could maybe qualify for power to house scale, any of our, uh, open spaces or some of our parks. Uh, she spoke at the Rotary last week and how her position can help assist the businesses that are in town, just reach out to her. She has gathered the information for the comp plan and working with department heads on the municipal building section, so that we can get all that up to date into S M P D, and all the surveys, um, for the database, for the comp plan. The data analysis will be completed within the next week or so, so that's wrapping up. And then for finance, um, in H R, we only have four risks, uh, foreclosures for this year, for December first. And, um, Heather feels that we won't have any. Usually, these people come through with the last minute, so that's great.
That would be nice.
That, yes, it would be really nice to not have any at all this year. So, um, Heather and I have been working closely together, working on all the insurance enrollments for two thousand twenty-three. We actually had Adam, who is our insurance gentleman, worked, uh, today at our building so that he could talk and meet with people about any questions. We have found a different plan with the Cross Blue Shields, which is a P P O plan. So that gives people more, um, they can see specialists without having to get a referral. It just gives them more freedom. It has better coverage, and it has our network coverage, and it's a little cheaper. So it's really a win-win.
Actually, on that, it's almost, it's a lot cheaper, it's almost thirty thousand dollars. A huge change in benefits, and so they did it again, and Heather did a good job, she often will have to try to find this plan. Especially if it saves you down thirty thousand dollars.
Absolutely. Uh, I've already started working on templates for next year's budgets. Um, we'll be meeting with department heads in December about their C I P plans, starting with that. Then in January, I will move forward. I know, round Rosie, and, yeah. The auditor will be here, our last meeting in December for his presentation, uh, dear Hall. And I already told you, the library is open.
Yeah, another administration, um, working, I've developed an outline for management leadership training for all employment heads. I'll be starting that in November. Uh, revised website, or step six, internal quality assurance is now complete. We're now heading to step seven, training inside review. Um, so we're getting there, so we're sure. Uh, family head meeting on Monday morning, thirteen people attended. Finished the training policy for the council, working on the R P for the town hall project. Attended the school meeting last week with the school superintendent. They talked about how they get the final numbers. Do you wanna depend on us? You there?
Yeah, was it really, it was apparently the longest town and district meeting that they've had, but it was interesting to hear how, um, COVID has impacted their enrollment, and they provided us some numbers with some clarification, so we can go into our budgeting season. Um, kind of having a better view of their involvement.
And, and how they, yeah, how they, they actually, so, a, a good piece that I wanted to bring up, that I want to tell the council. What I did learn is that they don't just hire, uh, teachers randomly. They have to, they have a school-based formula, where based on school standards and education of class size, based by pre-K, K one, two, three, four, how many kids are allowed in the class, um, how many teachers they need for those kids. And, and so what, so like, if it's eighteen to twenty-two kids, and you're gonna have twenty-three kids, they try to, you know, they, they argue with, well, do we, do we need another teacher, teacher A, or can a teacher do the twenty-three? And how does that impact the system? So, you know, at, at least there's, give me, probably not John, but it gives gives me a little comfort to know that it's not just willy-nilly, you're not just poking people out of the sky and saying, hey, let's have another teacher. But there's actually some kind of a, uh, school formula that they've used to actually determine, and they're actually able to give us that.
I think they also have like a very structured approach to teacher salaries based on, um, how long you've been teaching, what degree you have, et cetera. Like, it, there's, it's quite fixed.
It was very interesting to see the high school, um, because you have to take into consideration the folks that are attending the regional program and how that kind of flexes with their program that they can offer, offer a Marshall.
Yeah.
So in two thousand sixteen, total enrollment, grand total enrollment was, for the school system was two thousand three hundred and forty-eight, and their projection for twenty twenty-three is two thousand one hundred and eight.
How many are from Rollins?
Three.
I don't know. Where I'm going with that, it should have gone down. But I'm not gonna go there.
I don't, I don't know that, uh, I don't know if I have that in here.
Well, good. Thank you.
So anyway, so that. Met with Jay and Nikki to discuss our first year doing all the mowing at the field and town, town municipalities. But what were well, what we need for improvement for next year, and a progressive approach on how to get there. Um, did the Zoom meetings, failed techniques, both traffic study. Um, Dawn has received her state certification, um, and the fundamentals of general assistance. And the fundamentals of general systems by Maine Welfare Director Association should be recognized. Receiving our certification at the spring conference in April. And that is my town manager's report.
Council member comments.
We'll start by welcoming Melissa and Jeff back. Look forward to be a fun year. Going into the holiday season, if anybody's making cakes, my annual push for the library, they have over two hundred cake pans that you can check out. Many different varieties, sizes, and forms, so if you need a cake pan, call the library. On a sad note, I don't know how many know it here, self burb pharmacies, but they will be closing within the next few weeks. So if you have anything there, or somewhere else, that will be a huge loss for this community.
If I may, so the. And Denise followed up with her and tried to get, tried three different avenues, what it is, is pharmacist is. Going out to be operated on, I guess, and so without a pharmacist in the building, she has to take the medication out. There was too much of a bird to remove everything and bring it back, and she couldn't find a replacement pharmacist, so we, Denise actually went out, went to Hannaford. Write a Walgreens, see if we could contract and getting replacement pharmacist, and right, and actually tried to recruit somebody. And they, they just didn't want to do it, and so without that, I think she got discouraged and.
It stopped, it's been a, been a mainstay for forty plus years here in town, so. That's all I got.
I just wanted to thank everybody for being so welcoming so far. Being on the town council, and I'm really excited about serving the community and holding this position, and. I think we have a great team to do so, and I would also like to just commend. The registered voters of our town for showing up this year, I think on a non presidential election year to have. More than half of your registered voters show up is amazing, and it just. Shows me that people are starting to pay attention, and they're actually starting to care. You know, with what's going on and getting involved in, and I hope that continues, so.
And I will see you tomorrow, Maia, time clock.
You got it, boss.
Excuse me, I welcome aboard, everyone, and I did attend a Unitel. Which is the gas line web conference on November third, it was very interesting. There is a login for municipal officials that you can get more information from Unitel, so if you're interested, you know, you can reach out to them and they'll provide you login information. I did bring that information, just because Marshwood High School is listed as like a high impact area. They have a special kind of thing with Unitel, so I brought that to the town and district meeting, just to make sure the superintendent was aware. I'm also going to, going to be participating in an exercise on December fifth with Unitel, just to kind of keep my. Ears and eyes open on. Having this gas line through town. Yeah.
Just wanted to, I mean, welcome. For the welcome again, and reiterate what Melissa said about the voters. I was outside on the very warm day that it was. Out there, just saying hi to everybody, and it was. It was amazing to see how many people were walking through and and happy about it, too, so. But yeah, no, it was good, and I think that's all, thank you.
And all I have is just, welcome, Melissa.
One other thing, yeah, I love the newsletters, and I'm wondering if the town council will allow me to draft something. To provide to administration for newsletters.
For, from the town council? Yeah. Do we need a motion or anything on that, I think?
No, I just consensus is if everybody's comfortable with that, we'll go with that.
Sweet, thank you. All right.
Madam Chair. Readjourn.